Okay, here we are, a couple of minutes late. Nice to see everybody. Appreciate my colleagues being engaged here on this beautiful afternoon for our Committee of the Whole meeting. So what we will do here to get started is I'm going to call to order the Committee of the Whole for the Kalamazoo City Commission for Monday, July 7th, 2025. Court Burley, please call the roll.
Commissioner Cooney. Commissioner Decker.
Here.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Here.
Commissioner Prudell.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Court Burley. Now please have a motion to excuse Commissioner Cooney from this meeting.
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess, supported by Commissioner Decker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, motion passes. COO Ram, Communications.
I will save my communications for the 7 o'clock meeting, thank you.
Sounds great, appreciate that. Now is the opportunity for the Committee of the Whole for public comments. Public comment period for the Committee of the Whole is two minutes. Anyone who'd like to come forward and make a comment on a topic of their choosing is welcome to that. Seeing no one at this time, we are now on to the work of the Committee of the Whole. COO Ram.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to invite Deputy City Manager Rebecca Kick up. She's got two items she's going to be reviewing with us this evening. The first is Arcadia Creek Festival Place Redevelopment Plan, followed by an update on the 322 Stockbridge Land Use and Plan. Thank you very much.
Welcome, I'm happy to hear.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. It feels like it's been too long since I've been up here and got to share my bubbly-ness with all of you. So, I am, I'm super excited to share these projects with you. They've been happening over the last six months, the start of this year, for the Arcadia Festival site, and then 322 Stockbridge has been underway for a couple of years. And the last time I got to tell you guys anything about that was when we were still in the floodplain study. So I'm really excited to share Phase 2 with you, and then what we'll be doing for Phase 3 as well, because again, we're really in the midst of implementing that Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 Plan, and of course, 322 Stockbridge has been such a huge part of that. So I'm really excited to share that one with you. So first, I'm going to share with you the Arcadia Festival Place. We have been engaging stakeholders, which have included event planners, city staff, community members, business owners who are around the site and throughout downtown, and organizations as well. So this has been a really robust planning experience for us. We have a great steering committee that has been helping us through this as well, and I know some of you were able to attend our open houses, and so now here's the big reveal. So we came up with a mission statement for the new iteration of the plan, which is to really envision the park into an intimate yet dynamic space that enhances the daily lives of downtown residents, workers, and visitors alike, immersing them in a beautiful and active place where social engagement, civic pride, and community are celebrated. What was really incredible about this particular iteration of the Arcadia Creek Festival Place, I think, is the acknowledgement that the event space has been an incredible asset to our community, but that with all the residents that we have in our city, we also need a city park. And so this new design really begins to blend the event space and the idea of having just a great park together, and I hope that you will see that as well. In the design principles that we talked about, we wanted a more flexible space. Again, the events that were happening in the Arcadia Festival Site now, they're huge, they're wonderful events, and we want to keep those, we want to be sure that we can still have really big events, like the recent Caribbean Fest and Pride, but also accommodate some smaller events and be able to have more programmable spaces. And when I get into the plans, I'll really show you how we've started to break the park out into rooms, and they do, they feel like community rooms that can be more flexible to the type of events. So celebrating community, again, making sure that we have right-sized events so that you also have park space as well as event space, more family-oriented spaces that can happen with events, but those same types of spaces that can happen when it's completely unprogrammed. You don't have to have something going on in the space in order to really enjoy it. We want to be sure that this feels connected to the neighborhoods, and that it feels, again, more like a park space, a plaza space, something where you can really begin to enjoy as a neighborhood feel, and not just programmed for large festivals. The design for everyone means accessibility. The park right now is not completely universally accessible, especially to get down to the water, and we heard many times throughout the engagement that people really loved the water and wanted to be able to engage the water more, and so in the design that I'm going to show you also, you'll see 100% accessibility throughout the site, even to the water. And then really thinking about what is the future of Arcadia Festival Site? Over the past 20 years, really looking back and seeing how events have evolved, how we participate in our community has evolved, and getting the feedback from folks, so we don't want to try and bring ourselves in and just say, okay, well, this is what we need now, but to really think about what would happen in the next 10 years. How many more residents will we have? What other kind of spaces can we think about needing or wanting, or what kind of types of amenities will we want for this park to really go for the next 20 to 25 years? And then overarching all of these was to have four seasons of activity, making sure that we were incorporating winter and not just summer in our plans. As we know right now, it's very much a summer festival type of site, so how can we really think about winter and fall, and how do we get those incorporated? And then the sustainability. So we know that when I first came to you and we started to budget for this project, we talked about not being able to maintain the park, the operations of the park, the fact that the types of festivals that were happening were becoming very expensive as well for people to even hold events there, and so keeping our sites on how can we make this a more sustainable site, environmentally friendly, as well as the maintenance and the operations of the site to be low barrier for events to be able to come into it, and also low maintenance for city staff, getting supplies or, you know, the lighting, the furniture, the playground equipment from local sources, so that we can also make sure that we can repair and maintain things on a regular basis. So in our first design charrettes that we had, we came up with three schemes, and each of these schemes had some really unique qualities. All of them embraced the creek and going down to the creek, and each of them had considered a building along with a stage, and that building was really asked for by the event planners as well, because we don't have a green room, they don't have a place to put their cash. They were renting trailers as offices and as green rooms for their stage performers, which again, really elevates the cost of the events that can happen there. They don't have storage for ice, they don't have, we don't have enough restrooms at the site, and so having a building that's onsite could reduce costs for event planners substantially. And when I mentioned the four-season aspect as well, having a place where you could get warm, maybe you were ice skating, or holding, you know, an ice sculpture festival or something like that, being able to have concessions, again, really heard many, many times, like, oh, it would be so nice if we had... And many of those things kept pointing back to, I think we need to think about a park structure, we need to think about a building. So that building, we have always kind of located along Kalamazoo Avenue as the most urban edge of the park, so to the north, and then having this lovely access to the creek on the south, and the south end of the park really becoming that community or neighborhood park area, and then the north end really becoming the event space. So through our work session processes and the open houses that we had, we had several people come, and they put their post-it notes down on each of these three different ones, and that got refined even further with the schemes, like, no, we want a stage at this size. Gosh, could we have two stages? Because that would really keep the vibrancy of the festival going if we had two stages, one down by the creek, and then one that was closer to the building, because that way one act could be switching out, and another one could already be set up and starting. And so the idea of two stages really got traction through this phase. And so then, in this last phase that we did in June, we started to combine into one. You know, the stage in Scheme 1 has good visibility and acoustics and allows for flexible use, can we get that same stage, you know, down by the creek? And so we got even more refined ideas. Keep the pedestrian circulation simple. We had some of those designs that you may have seen, you know, they were kind of crossing, or they kind of had wiggles to them, and they said, no, we need really simple pedestrian access. And that's how we came to this final preferred plan. You can see the idea that I first mentioned about rooms, you can see how the central green, the plaza, the terrace lawn really become places. You could see an event happening on each one of those individually, or coming all together for one huge festival like Pride, or the Caribbean Fest, or Blues Fest. Again, the terrace lawn has a completely accessible pathway that runs along the east side all the way to the south, and I'll show you a photograph of what really inspired that terrace lawn idea, and you can see that each piece of that terrace lawn is accessible through that pathway. So whether you're walking, wheeling, or rolling to that space, you have access to all of the seats in every aspect of that. On the other side, on the west side, we have a large playground. We doubled the size of the playground, because we knew that that was such a cool asset that was there before, and then this really embraces it into a bigger part of the park, as well as a splash pad that's over on the east side. So it really becomes kind of a longer playful area, rather than just one small space that it was previously. The open-air pavilion and stage becomes a much more flexible place. Because it's an open-air pavilion, you could have yoga and workouts and seating as a café for everything that can happen behind it on Coopson's Alley, having a food truck rally, having food vendors there, you could sit underneath the open pavilion. You can build a stage there that would be able to accommodate multiple sizes of acts, rather than just having the one small stage that we have now. Many of our national acts, or bigger acts, have to rent additional stage and rigging in order to add on to the stage that we have, again, increasing the costs for those type of venues that we would love to be able to bring here, and this open-air pavilion would give us more flexibility. Again, I'm going to share with you some photographs of park that was a huge inspiration for how we're thinking about that open-air pavilion as well. And this is a more dynamic view of the open-air pavilion, and then how the building also frames the site. We also talked to several people who said, gosh, I would really love it if my event could have a overlook to the park, especially if it's a fundraiser, you could really sell some premium seats up there, you could really have an incredible view, and this is some of the feedback we got from some of the event producers, like, yes, rooftop access, please. Oh, another thing about the building which really helped a lot of the event producers that we heard was just an area for their volunteers to gather, and make sure that their volunteers have everything that they need, even a training space for their volunteers, because some of these events have hundreds of volunteers that switch out, you know, during the day, and to be able to have one single place for their volunteers to come, get organized, have their t-shirts, their lanyards, you know, their passes, everything that they need was also something that they were really excited about that could happen in this building. So here is one of the inspirations for that pavilion, and we had all, we had hundreds of pictures out at our open houses and our stakeholder meetings, and we asked people, first thing we had them do was, hey, go to the table and pick out images that you really love, that are resonating with you, and then we asked people to talk about, tell me why you picked this picture, tell me why you picked that picture. And this was one of the photographs that someone had selected, well, several people had selected this particular photograph as well, and they just loved the big open-air pavilion, and they could really, again, see that flexibility and see how it can, you see it as kind of an everyday in the one picture, but then you can also see it utilized as an event and see what a cool vibrant space that it becomes. And then this is just another couple of views of how that open-air pavilion has been used for concerts, for just café seating, for play as well. And that's also, again, a huge national act picture, and then one with just a single performer, so it really does work for multiple purposes. This is the inspiration for the River Amphitheater Walk in the terrace lawn area, where you could sit and enjoy music at the second stage as well. And so this really gives you that feeling of how the terrace wraps in with that walkaway that, again, makes this a more accessible area. I really love the lighting here, too. You can see where you could do a movie in the park where it's later at night, and you've got all of this lighting that is right along the edge of the terrace as well, making sure that, you know, people can see their way around, you know, during an evening performance as well. And these are some inspirational images for the playground, really thinking about areas that are both seating, but also really fun to play on, an alternative to just a typical slide, but something that you could run around, really get a view of the park and slide down, as well as the splash pad, really using the topography of the site to make it even more playful to kids and have more creative play along the way as well. And then these are inspirations for the Coopson's Alley idea, that that really becomes a public space. You can think of like Bates Alley, or even Haymarket Alley, how those spaces are shaping up. We're really thinking about the same inspiration for the Coopson's Alley, becoming a festival street, really drawing people in. It'll be a really cool asset off of Kalamazoo Avenue, and especially for some of the businesses that might be coming back and around that area where North Verdick is also. So the next steps of our process, as we've gone through the discovery phase of what do we need, and the design, and we've come up with our preferred plan, the next is to really focus on budget and our timeline and construction. So we're going to get our final documentation and report from our landscape designers that will be all the way through the schematic design and phasings, and we'll get an updated cost estimate that I'll be able to share with you in September. We'll have a one-day work session to present all of those designs, and again, that will happen this September, and we'll begin design development once we've got everything solid. Yep, this is the playground equipment we're going to use, and this is the lighting, and this is the furniture, and these are the plantings, that's the level of detail we'll get into in September. And then we're really hoping to have an anticipated bid date by next spring. So seems like it's going very quickly, but it's going very smoothly. We've also, for the building, we have currently got requests for proposals out for architectural services to do a schematic design for our building. Again, we've done lots of outreach already to folks, like, what should be in the building? And we think we've got the program down, but we want to make sure that we've got the right square footage for that, we've got the right life safety issues, how tall should the building be? So we'll be getting that into schematic design, and we'll have a much better review of that at the September meeting as well. So we'll be looking for your feedback on the rest of the site completely in September. So I want to stop there at the Arcadia Festival Site discussion and ask you if you have any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca Kick. Questions, Commissioners? Vice Mayor?
Sure. Rebecca, thank you so much for this vision. You know, I know it's been a long time, and we've been working on this for quite a while. Appreciate the charrettes and really getting excited about the transformation of this space for all the people of Kalamazoo. Once we have the anticipated bid date in 2026, then when does construction begin? Does it begin right after that, during the spring/summer of next year?
Yes, yes, that's what we would anticipate. Now, what I will be able to be more clear about in September is what construction. So right now, we've raised $4 million to start this. Of course, that will, we are anticipating that we will have at least two phases for the construction of this, because that $4 million would definitely not get us a building. And so we are looking at maybe all of the site preparation. We also don't have an estimated cost for the stage yet, for both of the stages, because that was something new that we proposed in this, and so really need to understand how much will it cost for sound, lighting, technology that we need for that also? So it may be that we are continuing, we may get the site complete, but we still need to fundraise for some, like the pavilion, and then also do a request for proposals process to partner with a developer on the building.
Cool. And so is... Okay, that's, we've raised about the $4 million?
Yes.
And are the rest of that going to be grants? Are we writing grants for the rest of the funding for that?
Yes, and we are also working with our consultant, part of our scope of work in our services, was to ask the landscape architects that we hired have done many of these types of parks, and they put together these really great sponsorship packages. So the other type of fundraising that we're looking for, especially from family foundations, very much like we did the Bates Alley crowdfunding as well, we'll take advantage of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's crowdfunding through patronicity, again, really thinking about, would you like to sponsor this portion of the landscaping, or this garden, or the playground? You know, many of these foundations like to support specific aspects of a park, again, if they want native plantings. There are many family foundations that love to support native plantings, so that would be fantastic, ask, you know, to be very specific about that. Someone may want to do the pavilion and the stage, or the terrace, you know, the amphitheater, and so we're going to put together a policy and a really nice map and brochure. We've seen these past examples that this particular landscape architect has done for other projects like this, and then they come in at, you know, this amount of donation for each of the items. And another great lesson learned that they gave us was, ask for 20% more and do an endowment, and make sure that your investment is taken care of through your fundraising by asking for that 20% extra and creating an endowment to make sure that the park can be taken care of.
That's a great idea. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioners, yes, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, DCM Kick. I was just talking about these plans to some individuals at work, so they'll be excited to kind of see them. I did have a question regarding, I know when all this conversation really began, and we talked about, you know, that last end there on the Kalamazoo Avenue, you know, having that building there, or possibly making that housing or something like that, and I see, you know, it's going to be, you know, the first floor will be specifically for the parks, what can you talk about that multi-use area? Is that going to be businesses? Is that going to be created for housing? What else is going to happen within that? And also with that? In some of the pictures that I noticed, it looks like there's three levels, two levels, how many levels? How high will this particular building be?
Yeah, great question. Thanks for that. So we are definitely going to move forward with thinking about, all right, what did we hear, and what do we need for that first floor, and maybe even some of the second floor, just so that we have a great building for the park and the park assets that we've heard about. The rest of it, we're going to leave as a bit of a blank slate for now. That will really help us think about the developer that we want to partner with, you know, doing more like a request for qualifications, like, hey, what vision do you see? How much housing could we put here? Or what type of offices could we put here? Now, on the first floor, we are thinking of a commercial space at one end. It may be a group of restaurants or commercial spaces that come in together, it may be one that utilizes that space. We're not quite there yet, but we are thinking about, you know, what else could we really anchor the building with? But as for the upper floors, yes, could definitely be housing, could be office space, could be, I don't think we're local, I think the zoning for this area is five stories, so that is the tallest that the building would be. Okay, thank you, yes.
Other questions at this time, Commissioners? Commissioner Prudell?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and the update on the project. First of all, I want to just really thank you for the family-friendly activation that you're putting into this. We desperately need that in downtown Kalamazoo. I know there's a number of us with young kiddos and grandkids up here on the dais, but certainly in the community, I've heard that over and over again, that we need something that draws families to downtown, so thank you for that commitment to that, especially the splash pad, I think that would be a huge hit this time of year as well. I was curious, when there's a large-scale event, say like Pride... I was curious, when there's a large-scale event, say like Pride, do you see the Coopson Alley as being kind of an overflow area that grows for square footage? Because with the building and some of the other amenities, I could see where maybe some of the actual square footage of space for people to roam out might be a little bit more constricted maybe, or maybe that's just optical illusion? But I was curious if you could just talk about, like, do you envision, like, Edward Street, Water Street, Coopson Alley is still being kind of like an overflow or closure area that you could do for larger-scale events?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Commissioner Pedal. So you're right, the building is an optical illusion on the site, because right now, there's no amphitheater area, or the way that the landscaping is throughout different corners are completely unutilized. The pavilion that a lot of events use as kind of their beer tent right now, the whole backside of that is completely wasted space because of the way that they kind of have to maneuver the event, because of, like, this is your beer tent area, period, end of report, like, you can't put it anywhere else. So we're creating more flexible space and more flat surface space, so the building really doesn't take up any more space than was already underutilized. I hope that helps to clarify that. But absolutely, yes, opening Coopson's Alley does allow for more circulation to areas, it allows for more programming for folks, especially those who used to always close Edward Street for an event. Now they can save the cost of not having to close Edward Street and utilize Coopson's Alley. If you still want to add Edwards and add Water Street, go for it. But it's not, but we are trying to make sure that not everybody has to do that every time, and allow for that extra space to happen along Coopson's Alley.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Another question for you as well, I know currently, sometimes Coopson Alley is somewhat of a, like a vendor drop-off place, say if you're like a vendor person and you're just dropping off your booth, and we've all been there, right? When you're showing up, Arcadia Festival Site, it's a really hot toasty day, you're tearing in your tent and, you know, tables and all that kind of stuff. Was there any discussion to consider where that might be for people who are coming in for events or larger-scale events?
Yeah, so another thing that we'll have in September is, the design team is actually using all of the maps and the layouts from every single event that has happened, and they're going to lay it out on the new site, so that they can see where circulation, deliveries, logistics, really mapping out for each event, like, what that could look like.
And then one last question as well for you. So this is all gonna coincide with the opening of the new arena. There's a tremendous amount of resources and thought being put into activating that creek, I guess corridor, if you will. Is there any thought about how those spaces are going to be connected, or to draw people from one space to the other?
Yeah, absolutely. So we actually have one project that's happening this fall, which is the Rose Street Plaza reconstruction that I've talked to you about a couple times with the downtown placemaking work, and that is directly linked along the creek. So we're working alongside of the event center on, can we paint the railings there? Is there public art that we can install along the way? Really thinking about, you guys have heard me use the term breadcrumbs, like how we get people from one place to another, how we're using murals, how we're using sidewalk art, or asphalt art, crosswalks, lighting. We've been looking at installing new lighting, particularly along the creek and along Eleanor Street. We redid the lighting on the Kalamazoo Mall, the globes that were on each of those older lights, you know, they were extremely expensive to change the light bulb, because you had to change the entire globe. So now, we've got new globes that now you can just change the light bulb, which is what we want, and they're LED, and they're brighter, and they're better for dark sky as well, because they have a nicer cap on top of them. So those lighting ideas as well, again, along Eleanor, along the creek, again, just making the whole neighborhood better for, for everyone, whether they're going to an event or, or to the festival site.
Sure.
And I forgot one other question I had here in my notes as well. So I remember the last time we were talking about Arcadia Festival Site, there was just some concern about, how do we make sure that it doesn't feel gated or exclusionary to the public, so it really genuinely feels like the community is gathering a space? Can you share a little bit about what thoughts counted to that to make sure that it, not just when it's a festival that you have to pay to go to, you know, any other time of the year where it would be accessible to the public and families and people from the neighborhoods?
Yeah, thanks for that too, because this was some really cool news that we understood. So right now, you know how the site is sort of sporadically fenced in different places? We actually don't need any of that fencing. We learned through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission that when you want to have alcohol at an event and you get a temporary license, it is up to the event planner to designate where that alcohol should be and what the area is. So when, for example, if you guys came down for the marathon and in Bronson Park, and how an area was designated for the beer tent, the same thing can happen at Arcadia Festival Site. You do not need to fence off the entire site in order to host your event. Now, of course, there are events that hold fundraisers, and they want to sell tickets, and they would like to have that area fenced off in order to host their event in the manner that actually generates funding for them. We are working with landscape forms and other landscape fence manufacturers to consider how we can create, they're called kind of like grommets, or fence posts that you could have in the ground that would be covered, but if you need to erect in a fence, we have it in storage. You put it in, and it literally works like a baby gate. You pull it across, and it hooks to the next one, and you pull it across, and it hooks to the next one. So you can fence it off when you need to, but otherwise, there would be no fencing around the park on a daily basis. So it's gonna be an open plaza and an open park all the time.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Commissioner Pedal. Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. You mentioned earlier around the cost of having the streets shut off. What is an approximate amount that a nonprofit or a group could, could save by having this new concept?
Oh, yeah. So just closing off Edward Street is like $1,700. So you close off two of those streets, and now you're upwards of, you know, $4,000 to do that. So you could save quite a bit of money, and then that goes into your fundraising, right, that you're trying to do. So saving $4,000 is huge.
It is, thank you.
Yeah, of course. And not having to rent a trailer for your cash room and your green room, and yeah, I think someone's gonna save a lot of money.
Any other questions, Commissioners, at this time? So I just want to say I appreciate very much, you know, being brought along on the progress of this. I had the opportunity to attend a workshop as well. I thought that those were very well-run, so thank you for that. I appreciate that. It is certainly a complicated process, going from a dream and concepts and ideas and trying to pull things together, what stays in, what doesn't, how does that get arranged? So anyway, thank you so much for continuing this, and I know you're gonna keep us updated on this one, so thank you. And you've got the next one as well, right?
Ready for the next one?
Yes.
All right. This one's equally as exciting, because I, I think, you know, when we were able to purchase this property, gosh, three years ago, with our site acquisition dollars from the Foundation for Excellence, how often do you get nearly 15 acres of property in a neighborhood to think about how you bring that housing back? How you knit that neighborhood back together? And I just felt like this was such an incredible decision that you all made to purchase this property, and I'm, I'm excited about what we can do. So just as background, so everybody remembers, this was the former Department of Health and Human Services building before they moved to their new location on Alcott. There was a former bingo hall that was on the site that has already been demolished. It's located near some really great assets, the Upjohn Park and the pool, the farmer's market, Washington Square Retail, Town and Country Grocery, you've got the Family Health Center to the south, and then some major employers. You've got KVCC, Bronson, the city of Kalamazoo is across the street, is, you know, one of our water facilities, and Kalamazoo County as well. You've got the Health Department to the south, near Family Health Center and ISK. So just the, where this is at, and thinking about the number of people that could be living here, who work at these places, and who need to be close to these amenities without driving, is really an incredible sight for us to think about. It also aligns very well with the Edison Neighborhood Plan. They want more housing opportunities, different housing types, better connectivity and walkability, save for people who want to walk and bike, because it's right near the trail system as well, really well-connected with sidewalks, offer parks and green space like Upjohn Park, but I'm also gonna show you how we incorporate a lot of green space back into this site also, and support the community character. How do we know this is gonna look just like it, like the neighborhood never left, like it was always looked this way? So our process started by first studying the site and the opportunities. We created some development goals, environmental goals, wanted to know what the buildable area was, what the constraints and considerations were, as we know that this has also been part of a major floodplain. We did housing plans and studies. What types of housing? What are the building uses? How do they look? What's the density that we want to put back on this space? What is the mixed recommendations? And I'm gonna show you how we've utilized our pre-approved housing plans. Shameless plug, those are the pre-approved housing plans that we just won a national award for, which we, you know, that was very exciting. And then we're gonna go through development concepts, how we tested the framework with those pre-approved housing plans and the unit mix that we're able to get there, really studying the block patterns that already exist in the, in the Edison Neighborhood. So here are the things I'm gonna walk through for the site study. I'm gonna talk to you about our development goals, the environmental, understanding the floodplain and the current conditions, and then what is the site area and the constraints. So the development goals for the area is that we want to draw people here because of the development offers something that meets at different stages of your life. We've heard that a lot through Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, and we're hearing it again through Imagine Kalamazoo 2035. I want to age in place, I don't want to have to leave my neighborhood just because I don't want to, I don't need my three-bedroom house anymore, I want something smaller, but I still want to live in Edison. So how can we offer people multiple choices as they move through life? And want to downsize, want to upsize, how can we make sure that we're getting a big mix of, of housing types? This also needs to relate to the existing neighborhood. We want to follow those same block patterns, the same look of the housing. We want this neighborhood to look like it's always been there. Also, supported by all of those great amenities and resources that we talked about, that they're easy to get to, walk to, bike to, drive to, however you need to get there, we've got good circulation and good sidewalks and trails to get there. We want to provide as many price points and a variety of housing types as possible. We need the city to find a balance between being fiscally responsible and also talk about the upfront investment. We're gonna have to build roads here, and we're also gonna have to run utilities here. The DHHS building was a single-use building, so there's no utilities there to build multiple housing types, right? So there's a big investment by the city to think about, okay, well, how much housing do we need to really think about? How are we gonna pay for the roads, and how are we gonna pay for the utilities that are gonna come into the site as well? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about those ideas. And then utilize green infrastructure to really mitigate the flooding and create amenities, park space and green space for the neighborhood that's going to be here. So to first talk about, like, again, variety of housing types, and also our fiscal responsibility. The traditional suburban pattern of development would have us do one lot size and one house type. That was our old zoning code, actually, in 1998, before we updated it. Now we can have multiple housing types and multiple price points, and this is important. You know, having ADUs, having duplexes, having triplexes, and row houses, and condos, and single-family homes altogether, allows us to think about multiple price points. It also gives us a very substantial tax base that can help us pay for the improvements that we need to do on this site as well. And so this slide really helps to see the fiscal responsibility and the difference between pladding something with one house type and one parcel type versus multiple. So for the environmental discussion, this is what the site looks like currently, and this is where the flood zone is, highlighted in the blue. Now, remember, what we have on site right now is nearly 10 acres of parking lot, impervious surface. So we know what that means, right? There's nothing soaking in. There's a huge roof of a 30,000-square-foot building, and there's a lot of pavement. And so we have a bit of a self-induced flood zone, as well as a flood zone that actually exists, because we have Portage Creek. So by introducing and taking away a lot of that impervious surface, it's gonna be a big asset to this. We also need to clean the soils in this area. There are metal concentrations that, you know, if we want to do residential here, we're going to need to remove those soils and bring in clean. That will also give us the opportunity to reshape the site, once we have the demolition of the asphalt in the building done. And I'm gonna show you how we're gonna reshape the site, so that we can create a better flood-resistant zone along the railroad tracks, and bring the sort of southwest area and northwest area into where the residential can exist. So here's that diagram of the buildable area. Now, directly in the middle of the site is an easement for a stormwater pipe that runs right through the middle of the site, and I'll show you how we creatively work with that particular easement in these designs as well. And then along the east and south sides is where the flood storage will be reconstructed. And so this would be reconstructed wetland, very similar to what we're doing on the other, on Reed Street. We've been working with the Army Corps of Engineers on flood storage that's expanding on Reed Street, and they've been looking, the same engineers did this site as well. So this is work that has been done in tandem with that site. So here's some constraints and considerations. One, which is the easement that I mentioned, but also Richard Avenue to the west does not connect through to the site, because again, this was a single-use site, and there was no need for connection with the rest of the neighborhood. We would really like to see Richard Avenue connect through, and again, create that block structure that the neighborhood could really use. The same with Emerson Street, really connecting through with Emerson Street, so that we have a better grid and capability rather than cul-de-sac streets. We want this to be a part of- We want this to be a part of the neighborhood. We don't want a suburban or gated type feel to those. We don't want cul-de-sacs here. That's not what we've planned for in the city. So now I'm going to show you some of the housing plans, the market analysis, and then the utilization of the pre-approved plans, knowing our constraints and our challenges with the site. Here are the opportunities. So first is really think about what we need through the Kalamazoo County Housing Plan and the update of that housing plan. We know that we are in a housing crisis and that we need a lot of different types of housing. And a lot of those different types already exist in the Edison Neighborhood. The different sizes of housing from cottages to four-bedroom homes, multifamily housing and duplexes as well as accessory dwelling units. So we're looking at how many housing units we could get. And at our first target, we set 170 units as our target for the site. Thinking of, you know, averaging about 15 dwelling units per acre could get us to 170 housing units. I'm sorry, but that's just so exciting to think about 170 new units on this particular site kind of being unlocked. It's like an escape room, right? And then we looked at the market analysis. Okay, so what did that say also in the, in the report? So 28% of households with children, 30% of households with single people, 10% of them are single people 65 and older. 72% of households do not have children yet or maybe not ever, right? And the pre-approved plans offer a variety of one and bed, one and two-bed units as well. So now if you think back to that diagram that I showed you that had the multiple types of housing on the blocks, you can really start to see how that market analysis and then thinking about the housing types that we need could really begin to balance and meet the needs of the future that this market analysis is showing us. So just a glimpse into our pre-approved plans. You know, we have lots of these built, like 20 of these built all over the city. From the north side to Edison to Vine, you could drive, literally drive by and see each of these housing types. They're cute as a button and they blend right into the neighborhood. There are so many times when people are like, oh, I drove down Rose and Wall Street, you said Rebecca? And I, I don't, I didn't see the house. I'm like, dude, it's right on the corner. They do, they just blend in so well that you, you don't even realize that that house had just got built. So, and that it's a duplex because they're stacked duplex with one door. And so you go inside and then it splits into two houses, but it looks like a single-family home. It's that really awesome density that we have baked into these plans. And that's what I want to talk to you about, the power of the duplex, especially right now. They're FHA loan eligible, so that's a great way to, you know, you only need 3.5% down on an FHA loan. These are brand new, so you don't have to think about, you know, code updates or lead paint or things like that. Because there are a lot of barriers to getting an FHA loan on an older home. Bringing them up to code can be really arduous and can be really difficult. But when you're talking about a new product, getting an FHA loan to build these or to move into it becomes a much lower barrier. 75% of the expected rental income from the other union could go in towards qualifying income. So if you think about it as a family or as even a single person, rather than building a single-family unit for yourself, build a duplex. Because then you can warrant out the other side and literally live mortgage-free. Because that qualifying income from that other unit can go to pay off your FHA loan. And if you also build the ADU, this is a strong wealth-building strategy for our community. And we have the performas for these. We have all the information and because we've built them, there are comparables in our city that banks can look at for that construction loan. And that was completely intentionally done, right? We wanted to make sure that we have those comparables in our city so that banks don't go, well, I've never seen this. I don't know what this is. Oh no, we've been intentionally building those for the last five years so that we can say, here's the plan, here's the performer, here's how much that costs. And here's your expected rent and here's your expected income from that property as well. So now I get to the exciting part, we're going to look at the plans. So we're going to look at a framework plan, we're going to talk about the housing mixes and then obviously getting it built, right? Because just having the plans doesn't mean we're flipping a switch and this happens. We have, shockingly, 200 vacant properties in our city right now, today. Zoning's in place, pre-approved plans are in place. Those 200 lots are not snapped up and we're not building tomorrow, right? So I don't want you to think that just because we have a great plan and a great framework and an awesome idea that somehow we snap our fingers and it just gets built. Because it's, it just doesn't work that way, right? So, but what's most important is that we have a plan in place. That we have something predictable, that we know that the community has bought into it. And that, and that is part of this big next step. Is to really understand what are the big moves that we want to do? Do we want to connect to continue the street grid? And some of the options that I'm going to show you do continue the street grid. But this is, this is something we really need to take to the community. And that, those, I'm going to outline in our next steps, what community engagement looks like. You guys are just getting the first, first preview, but this, this work is not done. We're looking at some higher-density housing types and mixed use at Stockbridge Avenue. And then we're looking at lower-density uses on the southern half and more neighborhood infill. So reconnecting the street blocks across the site really create accessibility. We could do easements for the street and block connectivity. It doesn't mean that we need to purchase that property. Again, it would be through community engagement and really talking with the business owners that own some of the properties on Richard Avenue to continue that through. The city does own the properties along Emerson Street. That was part of the sale of this particular property. So we could bring Emerson Street through, but it would just be Richard Avenue is, is the question. And then I mentioned to you the cleanup of the site. That is a big challenge right now. We would really need to think about how we would pay for that and how we could get that new soil in and think about how, how we would facilitate that in order to get this project started. And how would we pay for the streets and the utilities to get it set up? But we have two concepts to look at right now, option A and B. Option A has 200 units and option B has 143 units. They both include multifamily, single-family, and what we call is that missing middle housing, the duplexes, the fourplexes, the accessory dwelling units as well. And we have in the first option, a very centralized green space that is nearer to the duplexes and the fourplexes. So I'll show you how kind of the housing is color-coded by a pre-approved plan. So on the first option, option A with the 200 units, the darkest blue buildings are quadplexes, so four units in those. And the lighter blue are duplexes. The brownish colors up to the north, again, I mentioned multifamily, so apartment units to the north. And then the red, orange, and the kind of goldy-yellow colors are different types of single-family houses. So from two bedrooms to four bedrooms in those single-family houses. And then we have what we call sort of the mini or the cottage house. And we've got a couple of those tucked into the north portion and the south portion as well. So that's one idea. And you can also see along the edge where I had mentioned that flood storage, which would be that reconstructed wetland area that also feeds into that Reed Street reconstructed area also. So that would all be green space, even though it's kind of showing in blue here. And then option B, which has a little different feel to it, a little bit more curved to the street. And again, but a much more sort of regulated plan. And the options for these houses, again, we're going down in units. So this is much more single-family homes. But we still do have some of the ADUs or the carriage houses that we've added into this plan, making them more multi-unit with the standard houses. And then in the next slide, I just have given you kind of a nice matrix to look at so that you can see also what are the square footages of those cottages? What are the square footages of the homes? How many bedrooms? How many baths? What are the total square footages? There's 78 units in the multifamily for the 143 unit option and option B. And in the 200 unit, there are 90 multifamily, so 90 apartments there. We also talk about the off-street parking spaces that are available for those. And you can see in the grid also the, or the pie chart, again, what are the percentages of for-sale units to rental units as well? So lastly, the last, the next two parts of this process, like I said, we've kind of gone through all of these and here we are now with a couple of ideas. Very similar process to the Arcadia Festival site. Now that we've got kind of these two ideas, what are the best aspects of each one? And can they come together to make one preferred plan? Are there ideas out there that maybe these two options might spark also? And say, oh, you know what? We forgot this. Let's, let's add this other missing thing. That's what's happening next. I will be going to the Edison Neighborhood Association for their July meeting, their July board meeting. And I'm going to give them this presentation as well. And then I'm going to talk to the board about helping to put together a neighborhood-wide meeting. When should we hold that? Where should we hold it? And talk to them about maybe some different exercises for a workshop that we can do with the community. Again, to think about what are, what are these two options? And what are the best parts of each option? And then what, what have we not thought about yet also? So then we would take all of that community input and come together with kind of our next iteration of the plan. And then finally, after we, if we do come up with our sort of final iteration of the plan, we would talk about how do we get a development proposal? Who develops this site? Who does the multifamily? We have pre-approved plans, so our community can do the single-family and the duplexes and the quads. But how, how do we sell those lots? How would we begin to get these parcels into the hands of our community? And so we really want to talk about what does that process look like? And so I'll definitely be bringing back the recommendations from the community engagement and talk to you a lot about what we heard from the community about how they would like the development process to be held also. So that together we can make the decision for the next steps of the community development process. So I know that was a lot, so thank you for allowing me to present this exciting development to you as well. And do you have any questions for me?
Well, thanks again, ACM Kick, I appreciate that. And could, do you have any at the top of your head what the date is for the Edison Neighborhood meeting?
I believe it's July 21st. Yeah, I think it's, it's like the third Tuesday of the month or something like that, yeah.
Okay.
22nd, I think. Yes, it is, I think. Yeah. July 22nd, I believe.
July 22nd, okay.
I'll make sure that I put that in an email to all of you so that you know when I'll be at that meeting, okay?
Helpful, thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Mr. Poirot?
Thank you again for, for this presentation. I know community's been definitely eagerly awaiting to see how this space was going to be activated. And certainly housing is a very noble purpose for that. I know there's a lot of concern from folks about the flooding component. And I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit more about just like the intensiveness of the research going into that and how to mitigate that. Primarily, I guess, one question I have, as you mentioned about the, the flood storage, that's a part of the, of that work that's been done. But is there any plan when the soil is changed out? When there's plantings that go on and whatnot to change the topography? That might, you know, make it less likely that it could pool? If you could speak to that a little bit?
Yes, absolutely, Chris. I don't have the specific height of the topography, but yes, the topography is changing. And I believe it's being raised between like three and five feet above where it is now. So yes, we, we will be changing the topography of the site. We would be changing the soils in the site. And we would be working with the plantings along the site as well. I can, if it's not online already, I will be sure it's on the 322 Stockbridge Project page that we have on the website that everybody can look at. I have an extensive flood report from Flayson Vanderbrink who helped us, you know, say, here's where your buildable area is and what all of their recommendations were and what came out of the Phase 1 from that also. Again, it's all in that report and I'll make sure that it's online.
Yeah, I think that's going to be critically important. I mean, we just saw what happened in Texas and that was a once-in-200-year flood, you know, that spurred out. And I think that's kind of the new norm we have to expect are these like 100-year floods that are happening more frequently. So I think for community's sake, I think it's going to be critically important that we just have that reassurance and like show the evidence of how that's going to happen. So thank you for sharing that. I also noticed on the map, it kind of looked like a, like a shrimp body. So it's like the tail of the shrimp and then the head of the shrimp moving in the north portion, that 5.8 acres. And I noticed on that 5.8 acres, when I was first diving into it, I'm thinking, oh no, like, you know, the big chunk of the floodplain is like right there where there's going to be housing. But I also noticed that there's maybe intentionally like the parking lot to the multifamily units. It looks like that's in that space too, so that's maybe somewhat of a safeguard as well. I would hope anyways.
Yeah.
The next question I have for you, something that's been a dream of mine is a fully-connected trail system. Where people don't go to Portage to do their, you know, recreation and whatnot. That we have a fully-connected community. And we have, you know, this parcel coming on this major plot of land, this 14.97 acres. We also have the Cork Street Superfund site that's going to be coming back online in the next couple of years. Do you see, I, I see in the, in the plans that there's the trail connectivity. But can you speak to that a little bit and how that could potentially help bridge the community together with trails, trails through this development as well?
Yeah, thanks for that. Because there is plans for a trail that comes from, you know, the one through the farmer's market and like the Lake Street area into Reed. And so of course Reed, when we were planning that portion of the trail and then how it connects, again, like even further south, like to Alcott, through the Allied Superfund site, this would be a yes and, right? So this trail would kind of, you would come down and then you could go like whoosh like that. And then it would connect to that because we think it is a very worthy amenity for this particular area. And there's the railroad tracks that are there. And so we, we just wanted there to be a yes and to that part of the trail connectivity. But yes, definitely see it as part of the whole non-motorized plan.
And you mentioned that there's going to be And you mentioned that there's going to be quite significant investment by the city if we proceed with this in terms of just making it development-ready, and so the utilities, the roads, all these things to prepare the soil, you mentioned that as well. Housing is expensive to build, and oftentimes in many places, it's more expensive than it's actually worth by the time you're done with the project. Do you envision public support to help fund the construction of these? Do you envision down payment assistance, those kind of things to help support, truly make sure that people are getting that first home experience to create the intergenerational wealth?
Yes, I, I do. I, I see a variety of things happening, right? So definitely, that's how we're building housing now. We are subsidizing a lot of our community development folks who are doing this. I hope that we will maybe even have a partnership with our, you know, neighborhood associations here. That would be really great, to be able to have, how can Edison Association really help with that and really get their community building here? How can we help subsidize that? How can we offer down payment assistance and development assistance? Just holding somebody's hand who, who hasn't done this before, but maybe just really excited to take that arm and have the ability to do so, well, how can we help provide that development assistance for them to become a first-time developer also?
Very cool.
Yeah.
And then you might have mentioned, as I might have missed this as well, but in terms of timeline, what are you envisioning timeline might look like for this project or projects, I should say?
Yeah, I would say right now, getting through this design phase is probably going to take us into, you know, September, October, and then we can really start to think about, all right, well, what is that infrastructure cost? How much cost is it? I can start to get ideas about that that I can bring to, to the commission and let you know what that kind of capital investment would be. And then we can begin, maybe I'll bring that to the 2027 budget rumble.
Thank you, thank you.
As well, yeah. But I think we're going to, we're probably going to be really planning this and getting those things together, 2025 and 2026, to really understand what the city's investment could be to get that development started.
Househead, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this. I'm excited, you know, housing is my jam. A couple of things that I see with this is there's a lot of work and investment being, being put into workforce development for individuals being trained in the green space. I'm wondering, is there any possibility with the pre-approved plans to incorporate some of that in some of those plans to, to get energy efficiency upgrades and also solar, whereby that bill can come down for those families who are moving into this maybe for the first time?
Yes, oh my gosh, this gives me the opportunity to say that the pre-approved plans that we have built are all net zero, and they have solar panels. So we have an amazing relationship with Consumers Energy that has really helped us modify our plans and make sure that they are net zero, all-electric, and have, you can get a charger, like stub put in, so even if you don't have an electric car now, it can be electric car-ready, and same with the solar panels. Maybe it's too much of an upfront cost like right now, but your house can be solar panel-ready. Yeah.
Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, DCM Kick. As Commissioner Hoffman, I also am excited about new housing, but I do just have a couple of quick questions. So with the area within the spot in Stockbridge, so is this going to be a PUD, a planned unit development, and will that have, will that have an HOA?
Great questions. So, we have not considered a PUD, a planned unit development, and we have not considered an HOA. We have been talking with, I've been talking with our legal team, with Charlie Bear, about how the plating process works, and it, it takes some time to go through, but I think it's worth doing our own plat for this. Once we've decided what the configuration of the lots would be, it, we've talked about condo, site condo, like there's all these different ways to kind of go about it. But, yeah, we haven't, final, final, said like how we're going to create each of the parcels, but I'm, I'm guessing we'll actually go through the state plating process.
Okay, yeah, the reason I asked that, because you know, usually with PUDs, 99% of them have HOAs. HOAs have fees.
Yes.
And a lot of people don't like to be in an HOA where they have to pay fees that the HOA doesn't do anything, so.
Yeah.
I just thought about, you know, that cost there, especially to the new first-time home buyer, that can add.
Agreed.
An extra, I mean, that's an extra, say $400 that they would be paying out every week, you know, when they have to do that.
Yeah, and I think that also limits the number of developers that could come in, right? Like, that almost feels like if we had one master developer and they did the whole thing, and then they held the HOA and they kind of did that. And I think that limits our opportunities to get multiple small developers, you know, involved, our actual community involved in building out the space, rather than just having one. And my brief conversation with the Edison Neighborhood Director, he was really excited to, about this idea of, you know, our community building our community and really opening up that opportunity to have small developers, you know, even from the Edison Neighborhood building here in this space. So I think whatever option gets us to that value and that goal is the option we would want to go with.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, so I'm looking at the, the page here, we have all of the, the housing right here.
DCM Kick? Oh, yeah.
So, total value of 3.3 million. Are you telling me those houses within, talk to me about where you're getting these figures from and these costs? And they're, they're just in there?
Yeah, that's not real. Yeah, that's not real. No, that's just illustrative. This, this drawing is really, and this, these figures are really to illustrate the difference between considering a single type of building and a single type of lot versus multiple types of buildings and multiple types of lots, that the value of that exponentially increases. And it also gives you multiple price points for people who live on that block and in that area, rather than one singular type and one singular price point. So, just, just for illustrative purposes.
Okay. I was wondering, I was like, I don't know how they came up with these numbers.
Thanks for asking that. Your, your beautiful math mind was going. I love it.
So, another question that I have, you know, again, so, yes, this area is in a flood zone.
Yes.
And Prining Nihoff, very, is, am I saying that, Prining Nihoff?
Nihoff?
Prining Nihoff?
Nihoff.
Very appreciative, they do great work. But it's still in a flood zone, is the thing. And even though if you raise the topo, topography, what'd you say, three?
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, I don't hold me to my numbers, because we really need to just look at the report.
What they have.
And again, I'll get that back.
So even if we raise the topography and they say, you know, this is where you can build, what are we thinking about the lower-line areas that you are now building up on? You know, what is going to, have we looked around the surrounding areas and seen, you know, how high, you know, this is to there, and just to make sure, hey, if we do this and raise this land, it's not going to flood these 10 houses over here now? So what have, how have they, I would love to hear they come back, and if you have an answer, if not, that's fine. I would love to hear, you know, what their idea and thoughts are for that.
Yeah, oh, thank you so much for that. Yes, we'll definitely have an extensive presentation on that, because again, it really incorporates, okay, to, in this particular drawing, you can see everything to the east, which is that Reed Street area, which is where the Portage Creek runs through. And these sites are being planned together. So whatever happens on one, that balances out the other, and again, really paying attention to, yeah, we're not going to raise this site, and then all of a sudden, we've got flooding on the west now because we've raised the site like to a little mountain or something like that. Nope, we're being very thoughtful about the entire context of, of the, the design and the plan. So thank you for lifting that up, and we'll be sure, like, as we move along with this and more, like, the plans get solidified, we'll be sure to present back to you. What is the topography? What are the different flood zones? What are the different capacities? Really bring you some solid numbers, and again, civil engineering and ideas about what would happen. Because as we get into that, I mean, right now, we feel comfortable, you know, with these numbers of units, but it, I, I have to be 100% honest, you know, once we get into civil engineering, would we change that? Would we lose 25 units or 10 units here or there, or change something around because we learned something different as we get into the actual engineering and understanding of where these parcels are? That, that may absolutely happen.
Okay, thank you for that. Constrates and considerations. So you talk about Richard Avenue terminates into a residential property, and I know you said that the city already owns homes or the parcels that are there along the Emerson Street. So that, that residential property, is that a occupied residential property?
It is not.
No.
It is not. It is an empty, it's actually the back of the parking lot to the cannabis business that exists there, and you can kind of see it here, even though we have our multifamily parking lot over it right now, you see how it like cuts out like a little key? That's the, that's the property. It's just, it's actually just the back of that area, and it's empty, and it's just landscaping and trees. There is a house on the other side that's at the end of that street, but it is, yeah, you can't really see how it kind of connects, but it's, it's further, like, there's a duplex, and then you can see the roof to the house, and then they have a driveway that actually goes up to Richard Avenue, or it's kind of like a little dirt pathway, so they would actually have a proper road.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I would, so we built a lot of these, you know, I love the pre-approved plans, I, you know, the zoning toolkit, love that, I read it all the time, because I'm just getting more of that knowledge. But out of all of our pre-approved plans, which ones have we not built yet in the city?
So we haven't built the quadplex yet, and that's, I think that's it. We've, I think we built all the single-family home versions. We've built the ADUs, those are on Rose and Wall Street. We built the cottage houses and the small narrow houses, those are up on North Berdick. We just did a ribbon cutting for those. So the quadplex, I believe, is the only one we haven't built yet, and we, because we're building a cottage court with the small cottages with the land bank right now, and we're having a six-plex and a 12-plex designed, but we are looking for, or Cheryl and I may already have a partner to build our quadplex, but I know that one's on the, on the horizon.
Awesome. So just one more thing, you know, I think about the area where we're building this at, and you know, I was kind of flipping through that, you know, housing mileage for all, and it talks about the AMI and the income limits and things like that. Working within financing, and I just kind of want to point out to Commissioner Prado's point, you know, down payment assistance, right? Yes, FHA is great, three and a half percent down, income, as long as you have that, you know, you're good. The thing that concerns me is that I, I hope that we within, you know, the city and within the different fundings that we can find somewhere, we can make sure that we have funding in there to be able to help organizations to give this down payment assistance, because even if someone wants to, say, purchase a house using MISHDA, they have income limits, you know, so that could be a deterrent right there. If they don't meet these, or if they're over the income limits by like a dollar or $2, they're not going to be able to get this $10,000 down payment assistance. So I think definitely making sure that we're kind of, you know, making sure that we have, yeah, closing, closing, oh my gosh, closing the gap, yes. And just kind of make sure that we have some things there, because you know, you take away, or you take a look at the way houses are now, and you know, I was working with a lady today, she's looking for a house anywhere between $140,000 and $160,000, she can't find them anywhere, right? And so I just want to make sure that we're also looking at, you know, what's it going to really cost to construct this, and what's it really going to cost?
Yeah.
Right? Because someone that wants to qualify for MISHDA, right, you know, isn't probably going to be able to afford a $250,000 house because they're going to be with that income limit. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're definitely taking, taking that into consideration.
Yeah.
And I may have one more, hold on.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, and I think that's where, you know, I alluded to, you know, our other community housing development partners, how do they fit into this and into the development process? I mean, that's a discussion we certainly need to have. How many of these are open-market kind of lots that are sold to, you know, builders and, and small developers? And then how many do we say, no, we really want to reserve these for the Neighborhood Association, or KNHS, or Habitat, or, you know, how do we create that good balance of what, what we're willing to put in? And also to incentivize other smaller developers to meet the price points and, you know, be able to offer that down payment assistance as well for some of these homes. Yeah.
And so I just have one other thought too, as I'm thinking about this. So new development anywhere is going to, A, increase the home values around the area that you're building in, right? These are new constructions, these are comps, I mean, you said we have a few comps that are out there. I know sometimes it's difficult to find comps for particular houses and things that, you know, I, we want to do like where, where I work at. And so my question is, are we really going to be making sure that we're not going to be jeopardizing individuals that have been in their homes by seeing their taxes, you know, rise by 10, 20%, because now my taxes were $500, oh, I got this $250,000 house, now my taxes are $1,500. So I just want to make sure that we keep our hindsight on that too, and just kind of think of those things, you know, as we're building this. Not say, I'm ready for some more housing, I'm excited for it, but then those are just things that kind of come across my mind as we start to build, especially in a concentrated area, as we're talking about doing right there, so.
Well, we have the, the head Lee Amendment that keeps things kind of lower, yeah. And then, you know, maybe there's some lessons learned about Marketplace. You know, Marketplace was done sort of in a similar fashion to this. We actually used a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, which capped taxes for 12 years at 50% for the folks that purchased in that development. So.
You just had a great idea.
We probably need to.
Neighborhood Zone.
This is like all of the ideas and thoughts that, that we can, we can learn from other things that we've done and really think about, okay, well, Marketplace has been there now for a decade, and what happened around it? Like, we could study that, we could really understand what impact did Marketplace have on the Edison Neighborhood and in the surrounding blocks.
Yeah, well, thank you. And again, I'm excited, I just, I just got to ask the questions.
I love that you ask the questions. It's totally fine. It, it really helps us sharpen our process and sharpen the way that we need to think about things and provide information, so. I'm great with it. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Hoffman, you have a question?
Thank you, yes, just when we talk about affordability. I know this vision that you all have for this 14-plus acres, is there room in there to think about community land trusts to bring some of that affordability to where it could be palatable for families?
Speak my love language, community land trust. Certainly, you know, we had a development partner that was, you know, purchased some of these properties, or, you know, wanted to do a chunk of this, you know, in a land trust? I mean, yeah, like, absolutely, I think that that's something that we I mean, yeah, like absolutely, I think that that's something that we should certainly consider. And, you know, when I mentioned, like, is there a portion of this that is set aside for, again, like this community developers? Or, you know, is there a certain subset of the property that we want to make sure, you know, lands in a certain way? I think those are all to be determined, and we certainly have the flexibility to do so, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Ms. Mary Hoss.
Sure, just really quickly, great questions, and great questions ladies, I appreciate that, and Commissioner Prado as well. So I just have one more. So, when the need is so great for numbers of units of housing needed in the city, why would we not opt for option A over B, so 200 units over 143 units? What would be the advantage to thinking about the 143?
I think it really has to make sense, right, financially, and makes sense for the neighborhood and for the community. And again, I don't want to get, it's a phrase, like, over our skis about like how the floodplain works here, and, you know, what are the numbers that we could actually get into the space? And I want to be sure that we're really honoring and thinking about the housing market in the right way, where option A has allowed those quadplexes and duplexes. Are, 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 A R E, our, O U R, are our developers ready to take on that size of development into a portfolio? I'm not sure yet. And so, I just want to be cautiously optimistic about getting 200 units. I think that that would be phenomenal, and obviously, our community needs every single unit that we can. But again, being cautiously optimistic about the amount of land that we can use here and what the market and what our developers could support. Just want to be sure we get that dialed in in the right way, and that's why we really need to take this to the community and to the neighborhood and really talk about what that appetite is. And I hope that when I'm presenting this to the Neighborhood Association and then to the community later, that, you know, we get some folks inspired about building some of these products in our community. Again, it's always been my dream, and since the inception of these pre-approved plans, is that our community builds our community. And I get very passionate about that, and I get really, hopefully, inspiring to others who want to take that journey on for our community and to really think about how that, we use the space to bring that to reality.
So fantastic. Thank you for your vision and for your, just for your passion about this project. I was hoping when I go to drop off my compost, that it was going to be so much more, and now I can vision that too, so.
Yes.
Thanks for making that space better.
Thanks, everyone. Any last questions here? All right, thank you once again. Two long presentations, I appreciate that. And I think that's very helpful. We'll be watching the progress as these ideas move along. So thank you for all your work, ACM Kick, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
C.O.R. Man, anything else for the good of the order? Okay, we're all set with that. Now is the opportunity for Commissioner comments. Just a reminder for anyone who's watching, Commissioners also have the opportunity to make comments at our business meeting, which will be starting at 7 o'clock this evening. Any Commissioner comments for the community at the hall? All right, thanks so much. We'll have a little break here before our 7 o'clock meeting, and we are adjourned.